Good evening, it is seven o'clock. The school community meeting of January 27th. A call to order. This meeting is being both video and audio taped. Is anybody else video or audiotaping this meeting?
We are.
Thank you very much. Please rise to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call is stopped to my right.
Honored to be here today. Kathy Soleetti, Gordon's secretary.
Pamela Blair, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Bill Fonseca.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Rich Fruchero.
Gregory Thompson.
Elizabeth Marcin, Voucher.
And Ms. Mayo cannot be with us tonight because of a family responsibility. Moving to agenda item number two, approval of minutes, 2.1, approval of the January 11th, 2016 regular session meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the January 11th, 2016 regular session meeting minutes.
Have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anybody opposed? It's unanimous, Ms. Soleetti. Number three, committee and subcommittee communications. Take us off.
So, we have some exciting news in the sports area. We have the East Long Meadow Boys Hockey Team is ranked number one in its league.
And that's the most important sports, I'm glad to know that.
The boys varsity basketball is in the top five for its league. Spring sports night is February 3rd, so it's coming up next week. And the new semester began this week, so we have all our new classes. Auditions for Spartanum were also this week. And the senior semi is this Saturday.
I see. Thank you, Ms. Soleetti.
Gonna be good weather.
Yeah.
Mr. Fonseca.
Okay, two quick things. The advocacy conference that I was supposed to attend last weekend was postponed. Actually, I got a phone call on a week ago Wednesday afternoon at 3:30 saying it had been postponed due to the weather. It has been rescheduled for the weekend of June 14th. So, the weather will be definitely a lot nicer. And day on the hill this year will be Tuesday, April 26th. I just wanted to get that out there so that everybody knows. I do plan on attending. As a member of the MASC Board of Directors, we do have a meeting the night before, and I will be there that day. That's it.
Mr. Thompson.
I just wanted to drop a plug for the Charter Commission again. They've completed their work, and Bill, please fill in anything you like. And they sent their work off to the Attorney General.
Hasn't gone yet. We have one more. We have another meeting tomorrow night to do the final, just look through to see if there's any type of graphical errors or numbering or anything. But the basic language has not changed, it will not change. It will be the same basic language that was submitted for the preliminary draft that will be submitted for the final draft to the Attorney General. That has to be in by the middle of next month. And we'll move on. We're gonna continue to meet to educate the public on the changes that we are proposing.
And just to reiterate, the recommendation is for a town administrator with a seven-member town council.
Strong town manager, seven-member town council, replacing town meeting and the board of...
And the vote will be in the April town election, the April town election.
And it will be, unfortunately, the way the statute reads, it has to be a yes or a no. There cannot be, by state statute, there can't be any options, which has been a question that has been frequently asked of us. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Marcin, Voucher.
So, the ELEAF will be having their Mardi Gras Gala coming up on March 5th. Tickets are $75. There'll be information on the websites, probably on Twitter. The elementary schools will be going home with a form, and maybe we can get the PTOs to send out something about it. So, it should be a nice evening.
Where is it?
It's gonna be at the Twin Hills again, and it's on March 5th.
You'll have tickets for us?
I will get you all tickets, yes.
And I had this one item. I had the pleasure, I think Beth, I saw you there, we saw the robotics at Maple Shade.
Yes.
What a fantastic experience it was. It was fourth grade. Amazing, when they had the software going, and the computers, and the Legos all moving.
Cool.
That's, it was amazing, but it was a lot of fun. Okay, thank you all. Opportunity for business to address the committee. Is anyone out there who wants to address the committee? Seeing and hearing none, move to presentation. Superintendent's Report 5.1.1, ELPS Protocol for Emergency Administration of Narcan. Mr. Smith?
Okay, well, we have our nurse leader here, Ms. LaBoumbarde. She's gonna come up to the table. And this is something that's been discussed over the course of two school years. It's been part of the work that our Youth Safety Committee has been doing. And as we've been partnering with Springfield Health and Human Services Department, our own East Long Meadow Police Department, the District Attorney's Office, and we have multiple people throughout all our schools working on this Youth Safety Committee. Out of those discussions and planning certain events for our students and our families, has been a discussion around, obviously, the opiate epidemic that's plaguing our state and probably our country. Part of that has been the use of Narcan in dealing with a crisis situation involving a drug overdose. I'll let Ms. LaBoumbarde take...
Thank you for having me.
Why, Ms. LaBoumbarde?
So, today I want to present a protocol for the administration of Narcan in East Long Meadow Public School health rooms. So, I think you all have a copy of the protocol, which was actually signed by our school physician, Dr. Greer Clark, on January 11th. And it is strongly recommended that school nurses have access to Narcan medication in the school setting to ensure its immediate availability to students, staff, and building visitors. Only trained school nurses or healthcare professionals will administer the Narcan, and it will be administered intranasally, so in each nostril.
So, administration will not be allowed to administer it? Principals, assistant principals?
No. No. All the nurses have been trained. The majority were trained on October 9th, and I was trained with one of the other nurses that couldn't make professional development on January 21st, excuse me, October 21st. So, what is the purpose? Narcan is indicated for the reversal of opiate overdose. Current research has shown that rapid administration of Narcan has been found to prevent death from opiate overdoses, as well as reduce disability and injury from opiate overdoses. So, in March of 2014, Governor Patrick declared a state of emergency as far as opiate overdose. And in April of 2014, we formed our Youth Safety Committee. So, we have many emergency medications in our health rooms. For instance, oxygen. We have oxygen in case somebody has trouble breathing. We have stock EpiPens for people that have a known allergy or an unknown. We also have medication for nebulizers in case somebody has trouble breathing. So, this is just another medication that is, you know, added to our emergency response plan for nurses to use in the event that somebody has an overdose. So, like I said, only registered nurses may administer it. And it's for respiratory depression, unresponsiveness, after you do a sternal rub or call somebody's name out for respiratory or cardiac arrest. And we have outlined exactly what you do. Of course, you call emergency medical services. You give breaths if the person is not breathing. You give the Narcan, one milligram in each nostril. You stay with the person. Sometimes the first dose doesn't last long enough, or it doesn't take effect for eight to 10 minutes, so you always stay with the person. I just think it's a great tool for us because there is an epidemic, and it's something that can be easily done. And at this point, I don't really think we should train anybody. Should just be the nurses at this point.
Any questions for Ms. LaBoumbarde?
Thank you.
Are there side effects or potential health risks for administering? And I ask that because if an individual is in cardiac arrest or respiratory arrest, could they be perhaps misdiagnosed by the nurse and were to use the Narcan? Is there potential for detriment?
Well, of course, the nurse would have to assess.
Yeah.
So, if it's cardiac arrest, of course, we're gonna call 911. We're gonna give rescue breaths, we're gonna give compressions, you know, whatever we feel is needed. If the person is awake, of course, we're not gonna give the Narcan, but nurses are equipped to assess and, you know, try to figure out what's going on.
Is there a detrimental, or a potential detrimental risk to administering?
It does say pregnant women, if you're allergic to Narcan. We're not gonna know that, especially if it's a visitor to one of our schools, or maybe a parent. We would have information on the kids, of course.
And the staff?
And the staff.
Only if staff want to reveal that information.
Do we ever ask them?
We have emergency information on them, but we don't necessarily ask around...
Some staff offer information to the school nurse, so it's kept confidential, but it's really, you know, up to the...
So, my question to that, though, if we're gonna administer emergency medication that could potentially have a detrimental effect on individuals, would it be of value to ask staff, anyone who we know will be in the building, staff, and certainly we already do for students, if they have an allergy and if they're willing to disclose that? Or, I don't know, I'm just trying to...
We have done that in the past. We gave out emergency forms and, at least with emergency contact information, and then staff can add if, you know, there's a medical diagnosis or medication that they're on, or allergies. But that is, you know, totally up to the staff.
Do we know the percentage, perhaps, that might respond negatively to the Narcan? Is there, is it not probable that someone would have a negative effect?
Actually, it's very safe.
Very safe? Okay, that's what I'm looking for.
Very safe. And actually, if you look at the dose, two milligrams can be given to somebody over 44 pounds or over the age of five years of age. And, you know, it's, like I said, it's just in the nostrils. So, what it's gonna do is restore breathing, because the opiate attaches to the receptor in the brain, and then it blocks, you know, respirations. So, when you give the Narcan, it knocks the opiate off the receptor and resumes breathing.
Okay.
Now, should this be attached somehow to the policies with our...
Basically, what this would become is, would be another pathway into our emergency response plan.
Okay.
So, you'd only utilize that pathway if, whereas it's assessed that this is a situation that would involve a possible drug overdose. Similar to what Ms. LaBoumbarde was saying, you know, if we've assessed something and we see that it's allergic reaction, then you might use an EpiPen. We have these emergency medications already in our health rooms.
Okay. Signed by our physician.
Would we use an EpiPen if, I know it's a separate town, but it's related, if the nurse or on the form that the parents fill out for the students doesn't indicate that the student requires an EpiPen?
Yes.
We would.
Nurses are able to assess and determine if someone is in anaphylactic shock. It could be any one of us.
Sure. No, I don't dismiss that.
So, that's why we're able to carry stock EpiPens, and nurses make the assessment and are able to give the EpiPens. We actually have given EpiPens to individuals who were not previously diagnosed with an anaphylactic reaction.
Sure. And valuable to do so.
Yes.
I don't disagree with it. So, this would be similar to that.
So, this is like another tool that nurses have to keep, you know, students, staff, and visitors safe.
Okay.
Great. I think it's wonderful.
Just wanted to let you know that DPH actually sent out a medical directive, and it says that Massachusetts Department of Public Health School Health Unit recommends that each school district have a written protocol, signed by the school physician, authorizing the nurse to administer to individuals who experience a life-threatening opiate overdose. And also the National Association of School Nurses.
I would strongly suspect that at some point the DESE will get involved in this and say that they wanna see some sort of a sign-off from every district.
Yes.
So, I think we are ahead of the curve at this point.
And actually, we've received free EpiPens from Bio Ridge Pharmacy. We have for years. Two pack of EpiPens are about $533. And I just heard, like today or yesterday, that Adapt Pharma may be releasing free EpiPens to schools. And I hope that's true.
Yeah, there is, there's a lot of pressure from the state legislators, because they're all behind this, to really come up with some cost-saving measures to the district to allow it to be either free or a very small cost, so that it is in every school and every district, and people are trained. But I still think that we are ahead of the curve, and kudos to you and your staff for getting us this policy or this procedure.
Do I get it? I think we probably should take a vote on this.
I agree with that. I move that we approve the East Long Meadow Public Schools School Health Services Standing Orders for Emergency Administration of Alaxo.
Or Narcan?
Or Narcan.
It's easier to say.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Second, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anybody opposed? Ms. Soleetti, we are unanimous again. Thank you again, Ms. LaBoumbarde.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
We have two staff positions. Can we move up 6.1 or 6.2?
Sure.
Yes, I do. Ms. Chair, I move that we modify our agenda to move up 6.1 and 6.2 as the next items in our agenda.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Second, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adjusting our agenda, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, unanimous? Let's talk about a Latin field trip.
Okay, so we have Ms. Voucher here, who is our advisor, one of our Latin teachers, we're their advisor to the Foreign Language Club, and will be one of the staff chaperones going with three high schools, really.
Yes.
East Long Meadow High School, Long Meadow High School, and Belcher Town High School, heading over the April break to Italy and Greece. And so, in your package, you have the full itinerary. This is a follow-up, because the preliminary approval was back, I believe, in April of last year?
It was just about this time last year.
Okay, so even earlier.
It was like three degrees outside last year.
Glad they could have better weather for you this year. Do, Ms. Voucher, would you just kinda run us through the final plans?
Yep. So, this is the same itinerary that I presented last year. We've secured the flights, so we definitely would only be missing the Friday right before April vacation, because our flight is late on Thursday night. So, the kids wouldn't need to miss any school on Thursday. So, we would be going that Thursday night, and then traveling to Italy and to Greece, flying back from Greece and returning the 22nd, so they'll be back in plenty of time for school following April vacation. I have seven kids going with me. They're all juniors and who took Latin III honors this year. So, we are traveling, as Mr. Smith said, with Long Meadow, which we did last time, and with Belcher Town. All Latin students, all students who actually use the same textbook series, so the curriculum, it's absolutely tied into our curriculum. And at this point, everything is pretty much set with it, so I would just very much appreciate if I could have final approval for it.
I wanna compliment on the thoroughness of this.
Thank you.
I even like the fact that you have the standard set about travel being safe with guys from the State Department.
I, it's very important to me that the kids be safe, and there were some questions from parents. I wanted to make sure that was addressed. And I have spoken with the company's representative as well. She actually was, she had something really, I mean, good as far as you can be good when talking about something so upsetting, but she talked about how a previous trip that their company had run, when there were bombings in London, and I think it was 2005, they had kids in London, and she talked about how all of their tour directors are trained for situations like that, and they actually got the kids out of the city of London right away, took them, you know, arranged buses, got them out. So, that actually made me feel really good that the company responds that quickly if there is an incident, because I know there have been concerns.
Very well done.
And to that point, someone will be monitoring the State Department in terms of their recommendation to travel when we actually go to travel.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And how many of our students are going?
Seven.
Seven, that's okay. Sorry if I didn't...
No, that's all right.
I have a motion here.
I move to approve the high school Latin field trip to Italy and Greece, taking place April 14th through the 22nd of 2016.
We have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
I think at some point you should engage the school committee, maybe a shop, or any...
I know, I'm a little jealous.
Okay, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, none? Thank you, Ms. Voucher, very much.
Thank you so much. The kids love it, so it's really a great thing for them to be able to do. Thank you.
Cool.
Okay, now, going from the world of Italy and Greece to the world of robotics, 6.62 VEX Robotics World Championships. Mr. Smith?
So, we have Mr. Van Buren here, who's our advisor to the science team, the robotics team. And this is specifically addressing the world championships, because we had approved earlier in the year the different trips they're taking to qualify for the world championships, or potentially qualify. So, if you wanna walk us through...
Well, as you know, every year we compete throughout New England for a chance to go to the world championship, which this year will be in Louisville, Kentucky. All the world championship slots for Southern New England will be awarded at the Southern New England Championship on the 5th and 6th of March. You know, every year, the school committee wants more information, but, you know, unfortunately, I can't give it to you until March 7th or March 6th, the night of March 6th. You know, I don't know right now whether we're gonna send 23 students or no students. So, yeah.
And I noticed that the itinerary happens during the April break.
That's correct. Yep.
And the fundraising comes from within your...
That's right. So, we have a parents' group, and we do various fundraising activities. We have a lot of sponsorship from the town, from various businesses and individuals and whatnot, so we're very grateful for that. ELEAF, of course, has always been a big supporter of us.
And we didn't make it last year, right?
We did not make it last year.
But I was calling you Bill Belichick Robotics, I'm gonna have to take that nickname back.
Well, it's probably appropriate this year, isn't it? Because last year, I felt we had our best team ever. We had three teams in the top 12. You know, but sometimes you don't make that last-minute play, you know, so...
But I think it's also important to note that our kids do their robots themselves. They do not have adults actively helping them with it. And we can't necessarily, you know, and I think that you do a good job, is make the kids do it themselves, which is, you know...
Another highlight from last year, you had Secretary, the State Secretary of Education, Matt Malone, spent a good deal of time with our robotics team. He was very intrigued by what they were doing.
Yeah, he was, yeah.
The other thing that I'd like to mention is that we started a new program at Mountain View with Ms. Barry, so she has two elementary school teams in the VEX IQ program, so that's... We got a grant from the R E C F Foundation that organizes VEX, and we started two new teams there. So, they'll be competing in Worcester on the 20th, I believe, because they have a separate, 20th of February, a separate championship.
Start them young and develop them.
That's right.
What's wrong with that?
If that dies to go, Mr. Van Buren.
There you go.
I have a motion for Mr. Van Buren.
I move that we approve the 2016 VEX Robotics World Championship trip to Louisville, Kentucky, April 20th to the 23rd, if our students qualify. That's correct.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Mr. Van Buren, wanna see trophy?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Smith, 5.2.1, the Birchland Park FY 2016 Mass Cultural Council STARS residency grant for $3,600.
This is the third, you're exactly right, the third of three grants, STARS grants that we've received in the district. So, this one's at Birchland Park, and this one actually will help our STEAM classes at Birchland...
What classes?
STEAM, Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Math.
They had an art...
Art gets in there.
Yeah, Art got in there.
And that's, that's actually what STARS is all about, is how you bring together the core academics with art. And so, $3,600 will allow our sixth and seventh grade STEAM classes to work with a storyteller who will start to help them apply effective narrative structure and storytelling techniques or handwritten to make animations with strong characters, settings, problems, solutions, and endings that coherently relate to story beginnings, all on the program, computer program.
Say that three times fast.
I could not say that three times. Had to have notes to get that one down.
Catch them. That sounds wonderful again, so do I have a motion here?
Move to accept the Birchland Park FY 2016 Mass Cultural Council STARS residency grant in the amount of $3,600.
Motion, I have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? We're unanimous again, Ms. Soleetti. Lot of business items here. 7.1, Corey Garwaki Foundation.
Okay, so in your package, you have a letter from the Corey Garwaki Foundation, and this is a group that honors a former student of ours, Corey Garwaki. And this is their first initiative to plan and run a 5K run and walk in October of next year. And what they're asking here is, similar to, say, the Raise of Hope, which generally occurs about a week later in October, that they utilize our parking lot. They would like to start the 5K and end the 5K from the grounds of East Long Meadow High School.
The only concern they have is they're asking for the high school bathroom facilities. Can't they use the Sandy Cans?
We can work with them on that.
Because I don't wanna open up the whole building with a custodian, I mean...
Is custodian here already?
No, it wouldn't be on that Saturday. So, we are gonna work with them on that, whether they actually need a custodian or whether the Sandy Cans be enough.
The Sandy Cans will be on the field, will be on the field.
Right. So, we would open up the field for them, because they may use, they may end it on the track, you know, they may use the stand. So, it's really, what we're working with them on is exactly what you just said, Mr. Fruchero, which is, do you need custodians here to open up the building so that you can have access to the full bathrooms, or are the Sandy Cans enough? Do you have water tables and so forth? And so, we're gonna work with them through that. Early communication has been that the Sandy Cans probably are enough. Are enough, yeah.
And Gordon, you mentioned the Raise of Hope. Are we confident that it's...
It's traditionally been a week later.
Overlapped, yeah.
It seems like a Sunday, too. Right.
I'd ask that question.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question, and it was one of our first concerns.
Okay. I'll move that we approve the use of the high school facilities for the Corey Garwaki Foundation on October 15th, 2016.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. 7.2 on our packet, school committee meeting dates.
Okay, in your packet, you have proposed meeting dates for our meetings for the next school year, starting on August 8th and running through June 26th. We did, Mrs. Soleetti and I tried to look at these and stage them more strategically for budget development when that happens, so that we're not doing as much, as many changes to the schedule as we've done in years past. And we were able to actually do it so that we're only on one Tuesday so far.
Yep.
I may have some conflicts towards the end of the year, but that's, that's a year away.
Yeah, I mean, it all looks lovely right now.
Yeah, until we get into it.
Certainly can always change it, as we've done, as long as we give notice.
What was it, if I was leaving BIA here from now? I mean, you never know.
Really.
I hope to be here now.
You never know. Yeah, so...
Yeah, just...
Go ahead and pick it one.
Oh, I move to...
Sorry.
To approve the, I'm still sleeping, the 2016-2017 school year school committee meeting, as said.
Second. Second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? We're unanimous. 7.3, ELPS School Calendar for 2016-17.
Okay, so this is our second draft after going back to the leadership team and the ELPS Collaborative Committee. In the first draft, you had voted and basically approved the start of school, the vacations and the end of school. This one now adds in the professional development days as well as the parent conference days. So the green throughout the calendar, those are professional development half-days in most cases, with the exception of the November full day. And we've tried to do a couple things with this as we've met with various groups. We've tried to rotate the days that we're having those half-days, so that our teachers who are shared between schools get to see their students. If you stay, for instance, on a Wednesday all the way through the calendar year, that means students that are meeting with those teachers on Wednesdays are short-changed throughout the entire calendar. So I think we've been pretty effective. The other piece that's come out of the last few years is where we can, we really try to have the half-day throughout the system, and if that means that it's divided up where one school might be in professional development and other schools are in parent conferences, we do that. An example of that would be in January, where the day is orange, but you have a couple different things going on. You have final exams at the high school, you have professional development in six through eight, you have parent conferences pre K through five.
Why don't we do parent conferences at six through eight?
Why?
Why do we not do them?
Six through eight actually has a teaming, with the middle school teaming model, they can get their parent conferences where the whole team meets at once. So they do schedule those with the parents.
Okay, so we're, this is our first, I have a daughter in sixth grade, this is our first year.
Sure.
So we should expect that.
If you, you have to schedule-
You can request it.
You request it, yeah.
See, we don't know that as parents, so.
Okay, so we need to communicate that better.
I say this because my wife has been asking me why I don't get her.
Right, yeah, absolutely. You can request it, and with the middle school model, one of the things that they have, sort of the benefit from that model, is that their whole team is free at certain times, and so if they can schedule those meetings where parents can come in at that time, you have the entire team of teachers right there.
Okay.
So certainly, I think you can request that either through the middle school administration or the guidance department.
I do want to compliment Mrs. Smith. This whole thing develops with that collaborative committee, which meets once a month in the morning, and Mrs. Smith's very good at kind of facilitating and trying to balance all the different comments that are coming from different staff members, because every staff member, every building's represented. Of course, the high school has different concerns in the middle, in the elementary, and so on, and I just want to compliment Mrs. Smith in kind of putting this whole thing together very well.
Having said on that committee, I'll echo that, because it is a real juggling act at times.
Ah.
So the January 2nd, is that contractual? Do we have to give that?
That's actually a federal situation this year.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, the federal government will be closing offices because the holiday falls on the Sunday. So, yeah, we have to-
We'll research that, yeah.
And then the other question I was asking, I know it's just how it falls this year, is Good Friday and the April vacation, that we don't align the two. Why do we not align the two? Why do we not have the Good Friday within-
Within the April vacation?
Moving the April vacation back a week, instead of having nine and a half days, we would just have one week off.
That, that's an excellent question. I think one of the reasons is that you have in Massachusetts Patriots Day, so the April vacation generally incorporates that Patriots Day, which is on the 17th.
Seventeenth?
I think if you did that, you're going to get either one or the other.
And that, that answers my question. Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Move to accept the ELPS School Calendar for 2016-2017 as presented.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? We're unanimous again.
What's the first day of school on that?
First day of school for students is the 30th, for staff is the 29th. Back in August.
The vacation will be the 29th.
At this one year, we were September 1st, now we're back in August.
Yep. Perception is everything.
Poor Selena's waiting for that elusive snow day as a senior.
I know, yeah. I saw her saying the same thing.
It's painful.
Still have February, March to go through, so make sure there'll be something.
Okay, 7.4, we have two scholarships here for our, at the high school level, Mrs. Smith?
We do. In your packet, you apologize for the, we didn't get the second scholarship listed on the agenda, but Dr. Flanagan's memo does talk about two scholarships. You have one that is honoring a former longtime history teacher, Mr. Larry Sherpa, and it's outlined as the second document in your packet there, and then you have one honoring Carmela DiLamano. So you have two scholarships that both would go to potential high school students to help them with their college plans.
Do we have a motion to accept both scholarships?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? We're unanimous again. Mountain View Field Trip, Connecticut Science Museum.
Okay, this is, goes to show you the incredible planning going on over at Mountain View. This is a field trip that's going to take place in May, but it is an out-of-state field trip, which does need to come before you, and so it's to the Connecticut Science Museum. Approximately 100 students going, with a cost of about $10 each after PTO provides a little bit of a subsidy there. Look at the chaperones there, we have the flamrocks here, too.
I move that we approve the mountain field trip to Connecticut Science Museum on May 27th, 26th.
I'll second.
Second, any further discussion? Seeing here, and all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? And the next item came to me, 7.6, I got a phone call from a Ms. Johnson, who was Senator